I'd like to call to order the council meeting of January 9th, 2017. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Here.
Peg Conway?
Here.
Ed Hattenbach?
Here.
Alita Kaymine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolfe?
Here.
Scott Larmour?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Rick Tye?
Here.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, and first of all, I'd like to welcome our tenant back. It's great to see you back.
Thanks, it's great to be back. I was retired from the dishes in the laundry room. Well, I still miss me.
First item on the agenda is our minutes from our last meeting. These were circulated in the package. Are there any suggestions for changes, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, we consider the minutes approved. The next item is our finance report for November of 2016.
For the month of November 2016, the earnings tax collections for the month totaled a little over $106,000. This is down about 43% from November of 2015's collection of $186,000. But the total amount received earnings tax so far this year is $3.3 million, and that obviously exceeds our estimate of $2.6 million that we had made for 2016. So as of this year, we've exceeded our estimate by $694,000. The local government fund netted $4,700 during the month of November. The total revenue for the month of November is $210,000. That brings our total revenue year-to-date as of the end of November at $4.4 million. That represents 116% of collections. I'm sorry, the estimate was 4.4. The collections were 5.1, so that blacked out 116% of what we had estimated at the time. The expenses for November totaled $245,000, slightly higher than the revenues for the month of November, and that brings our total expenditures to $3.6 million. That represents about 75% of the budget has been expended as of the end of November. The budget was $4.7 million, so we spent 3.6 of it, and that leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance of $5.5 million at the end of November. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the manager? If not, we will move through to the next item on the agenda and invite Sharon Gary.
Sharon Gary, 7200, Winding Way. Not only am I a citizen, but my job is Hamilton County Safe Communities Grant Coordinator. It's a traffic safety grant run through the state of Ohio. And on the heels of last month, a resolution passed for pedestrian safety, I just wanted to offer this additional education and aspect of funding, reaching out to individual communities who are looking to keep pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists safe. There's a lot of resources that the state has, there's a lot of opportunities to get the word out and keep pushing in that message. We partner a lot with all sorts of law enforcement. We've done your bike rodeo. We do lots of things in all the communities. So I just wanted to put it out there and let you know that we're here. If you think of something we can do to augment and to add to what you guys currently have, give us a call. I've made a connection with Nicole. Hopefully, we'll keep those lines of communication open to look for opportunities. Okay?
Hi Sharon, I'm Natalie Wolfe, and I've been promoting pedestrian safety in Amberly Village since I was elected to council in 2011. And I, as a member of Week Drive, we're given a lot of information about safe routes to school grants, which unfortunately, we really don't qualify for because we don't have a school district here in Amberly. But I would love to talk to you more about what other grants and funding that there is to make it even safer and more pedestrian-friendly here in Amberly.
Well, I will tell you just quickly that the number for pedestrians, even though traffic deaths are going down, cyclists and pedestrian deaths are on the uptick nationwide and certainly here locally. Can't really discern what the reason is. Is it, I think the biggest reason is probably exposure. There are more millennials, more people who are out walking, being out there. So I know that NHTSA, I just got the big report, what their hope is for the next five-year plan, and that is one of their key strategies, is to increase awareness for public pedestrian and cyclist safety. I mean, it's got its own special one because that number's on the rise. So if not now, it's certainly going to keep growing, so there should be more money or at least more opportunity on a national level to keep growing. I'm happy to get you my information.
Great.
Super. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to the committee reports, and the first committee is my committee, the Land Development Committee. At the last council meeting, we authorized the village manager to enter into a ground lease related to the north site with Sherman Properties, and we basically gave the authorization to commit, to enter into a ground lease substantially in the form that existed as of our meeting in December. There were a number of changes to the ground lease over the last month, and so we have brought the ground lease again forward. The ground lease, both in the clean version and the redline version, was circulated to all council members in the package, and there was a memorandum summarizing the changes. One of the key changes is that it went from a, initially, the draft had, that we had reviewed in December, provided 15-year lease term with renewals, which would extend eventually up to 99 years if the, if our tenant on the property wanted to extend what we, the new draft just provides for a lease up to 99 years. There have been various other wording changes. Earlier this evening, the Land Development Committee met and reviewed the lease, and the Land Development Committee unanimously recommended to, recommend to council the approval of this lease as long as there are changes made to Section 35 of the lease, and Section 35 of the lease deals with the provision with respect to non-compete, and what the changes that we're requesting that be made is that they deal with future tenants beyond Mercy. The current non-compete clause very much is specific to recognizing that the initial tenant will be Mercy, and Kevin is going to work to make some of those changes to make that more generic beyond that initial period in the event that Mercy is not the tenant on the property down the road. So given the recommendation from the Land Development Committee, given the recommend, what council did in December, and given the explanation of the changes, I hereby move that we again authorize the village manager to enter into a lease similar to what is now currently in the draft, and would therefore move that we approve ordinance 2017-1, authorizing the changes to the ground lease.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-1. Are there any questions? I do have to, and I assume this is what Kevin's telling me I should do. I first want to, before moving to pass ordinance 2017-1, I would like to first waive the three readings of ordinance 2017-1. Requesting that we waive the three readings because Mercy is on a timeline and really needs to enter into this lease on a timely basis so that Sherman Properties can get on with the plan for development of this property. So I hereby move that we waive the three readings.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings of ordinance 2017-1. Are there any, is there any discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings of ordinance 2017-1. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
I now move that we adopt ordinance 2017-1.
Second.
Well, I think I've, okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-1. Is there any discussion? If not, it has been-
I just want to quick comment, I'm sorry. I should have brought this up during the Land Development Committee meeting, but I'm going to give this to Nicole as part of the record. It's just a layout of the property that they've given us with a parking lot in the building on it. Since, one of the changes since you guys last voted on it was the property size has increased a little bit, from 1.9 to 2.1 acres, and that's been to accommodate, there's a retention pond that was a little bit outside what we had lined up, and there's a driveway on the east side that we needed to kind of push the property over to encompass. That's why I just want to let you know, to make sure it is a little bit larger than what you looked at before.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-1. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to move that we hereby declare that this particular ordinance an emergency. Again, this is required in order that we can move forward in an expeditious manner with Sherman Properties and Sherman Properties with Mercy Medical. There are, you know, clearly, this is a very attractive tenant to the village because of the revenue that we brought in, and it is really necessary that we move forward in this expeditious manner. So I hereby move that we declare this ordinance as an emergency.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we declare ordinance 2017-1 as an emergency measure, which will allow the ordinance to go into immediate effect. Is there any discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-1 as an emergency. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
Okay, and that completes my report of the Land Development Committee. We will now move on to the manager's report.
I have two items of business to talk about. One is the manager's report, but the first is ordinance 2017-2, which is adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for Amberly Village. Before you this evening is the code update. This is referred to as the codification. This is an administrative function that captures all of the legislation that the council has approved from our last annual update up through August of 2000, up through October of 2016, and it captures changes from the Ohio Revised Code from the last annual update up through August of 2016. This is sort of a one-source stop for all of the information. We refer to it as the green codebooks, although they're no longer green. I think for most of you, you refer to this as an online document, and that's what we use in the office as well. But this is an opportunity for us to capture all that legislation, bring it up to date, and have it under one particular document so it makes it easy reference, and we make it accessible to our residents as well. This is a process that involves the clerk and also involves the law director. We do contract out the service through American Legal Publishing. And they completed the work, and it's necessary for us now to adopt it, even though it's legislation that you have already adopted and the state has already adopted the legislation as well. So it's appropriate for us to do a couple of things tonight. First is to, a motion to waive the three readings, the second would be to approve the codification, and the third is to declare it an emergency, only in the sense that it's already been done, so if you don't declare it an emergency, it could go into effect in 45 days, but it's really a redundant process. So that's what is before you this evening, and ordinance 2017-2. So we need a motion.
I move that we adopt, we waive the three reading requirements for ordinance number 2017-2.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings for ordinance 2017-2. Is there any discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on ordinance 2017-2. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2017-2, ordinance adopting and enacting the supplement to the Code of Ordinances of Amberly Village.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-2, adopting and enacting the Code of Ordinances for Amberly Village. Any discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-2. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
And finally, I move that we, that this ordinance be hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation, the public peace, health, and safety that should go into effect forthwith. Reason for such emergency is the necessity of bringing current, the earliest possible time of the village code of authority.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-2 as an emergency measure. Any discussion? If not, we, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-2 as an emergency. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item would be the manager's report, and I have about four items I wanted to mention from that. The first item is that the village did experience a water main break at 2390 Section Road, so this would be across from Farm Acres, and it's in the same vicinity as an area where we're doing a stormwater project, so it's a little bit dicey in that area. There has been a temporary patch placed on the, on the water main break. That's by Greater Cincinnati Water Works. They will come back when the weather is appropriate to make the necessary repairs there. And in addition, our stormwater contractor, because of the soil conditions at that point, the ground is so saturated that they're not able to complete the project right now, so there's a bit of a law on that particular project as well. But the roadway is safe, it's fine to travel in that area. The second item I wanted to mention is regards to the Duke Energy Central Corridor Pipeline Extension Project. The open house has been set for January 26th, and as residents know, the, the village is still in the, in the mix here as it relates to the alternate line. It is not part of the main line any longer, but if residents are interested in attending that meeting, it is posted on our website for January 26th. That will be held at the Crown Plaza in Blue Ash from 5:30 till 7:30 with presentations at 6:00 and 7:30. The third item I wanted to mention is in regards to the schedule for council meetings for the balance of the year. Typically, we look through the calendar to see if there are any particular conflicts, and this year, we identified two conflicts, the first one being in April, or potential conflict, the first one being in April, so the April 10th council meeting falls on the first night of Passover, and so typically, we would not meet on that particular night and try to find another date that is compatible. That particular date for, from a staff standpoint, would be the 6th of April, which would be the Thursday before our regular council meeting, which I don't believe falls on any other holiday. So we-
Wait, so, 6?
April 6th. So the only, the other alternative would be to do April 19th, which falls pretty late in the month.
So you like that? Totally free.
So is April 6th, other than Vice Mayor Wolfe, is that a acceptable date? Do I search for other dates?
During the week of the 10th, that is, I know the 10th is scheduled, 12th, 13th, so is that no good?
I stayed away from, and that's the entire week of Passover, so I stayed away from that week. Is there other, other-
There would be no, I mean, there should be no problem in the middle of Passover.
In the, okay. Okay?
Beginning on the 12th.
So the 12th, the 13th, which would be Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday is sort of a, you know, a lot of things to do.
The 12th?
On the 13th, I think.
How, how about the 12th?
I thought it was the 12th.
Is everyone okay on the 12th?
Okay, I go for you.
I hereby move-
What, Mayor's Court? Have we used?
Uh, it is, yes, thanks. Thanks, Stacy. It is Mayor's Court, yeah.
How about the 13th?
What was the 13th, Peggy?
It's totally Thursday. Everyone okay on the 13th? I hereby move that we move the April 10th regularly-scheduled council meeting to April 13th.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we move the regularly-scheduled April 10th council meeting to April 13th. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It noted that that resolution passed as unanimous.
The only other conflict would have been the October, council meeting falls on October the night, and that's during Skooka, and I didn't know that that is a-
Is that the beginning of Skooka?
Yeah, it's not the beginning.
October 9th is okay. That's okay.
Fine, for the October night, so we don't need to change that meeting then. All right, we'll go ahead and set the calendar for 2017.
It is Columbus Day.
Sorry?
It is Columbus Day.
But remember, we had a resolution on Columbus Day years ago.
We're good for that. And then my last item is just to comment that the only person probably happier than myself for Lieutenant Bloom to be back is Chief Wallace, and as soon as Lieutenant Bloom came back, Chief Wallace went on vacation, so I think that demonstrates how appreciative he was. So we welcome Lieutenant Bloom back to Amberly. That did, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for the manager? Now we'll move on to the next item, and I guess I'll handle this. At the December meeting, council approved the manager's evaluation for the period September 2015 to September 2016, and we also recommended and approved pay actions with respect to the manager's compensation, which we have before you this evening is an addendum to the manager's contract reflecting those pay actions. So I hereby move that we adopt ordinance 2017-3, which authorizes an addendum to the village manager's employment contract.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved, again, I messed up again. Okay, I would first like to waive, I would first like to waive the three readings on this particular ordinance. We want the manager's contract to go into effect effectively immediately, and we see no reason to really delay this since we all had approved this. So I hereby move that we waive the three readings with respect to ordinance 2017-3.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings with respect to ordinance 2017-3. Is there any comments or questions? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive three readings on ordinance 2017-3. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
Okay, and now move that we adopt ordinance 2017-3.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-3. Is there any discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-3. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure. Again, we want the contract to go into immediate effect reflecting these pay increases. The contract is a contract that normally runs on a calendar-year basis, so basically, this keeps us up to date as far as that. So I hereby move that we adopt ordinance 2017-3 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-3 as an emergency measure. Is there any discussion? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2017-3 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Rich Bardock?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alita Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wolfe?
Yes.
Okay, I do not believe that there is a chief report this evening, okay? So we'll move on to the mayor's report. I just have a couple items to mention. With respect to the Environmental Stewardship Committee, the village has been notified that we again will be awarded, and I think it's the 13th year if I had to guess, a Tree City USA Award, and we also this time got a growth award for the additional actions we've taken. As far as the agenda for the Environmental Stewardship Committee in 2017, just some upcoming events, there will be a showing of Trees in Trouble, which is a video that was developed in the Hammonton County. That will be, that showing will be on Sunday, February 19th at 2:00, and there will be details to follow, but the video will be shown, and then there will be some discussion afterward. The One Stop Drop, and this will be the fourth annual One Stop Drop, is scheduled for Sunday, April 2nd, and it will again occur between the hours of noon and 4:00, and there will be details coming forward on that. And then finally, the last item on the Environmental Stewardship Committee is the next meeting will be January 23rd at 7:00 in the community room. Other item, I just wanted to-
Tom, before you leave One Stop Drop, I know the newsletter, the E! News just came out, but I periodically throughout the year, I notice people leaving their electronics at the curb for junky, and I'm always so tempted to, like, get out of my car and ask why they're doing that. I think that it would be helpful to include in the newsletter periodic reminders to save your broken electronics, anything with a core, for the One Stop Drop. Much better than putting it up. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item, I just wanted to, we had a resident who passed away over the past month, who was very active, Stan Cohen, very committed resident of the village, very committed to, longtime member of the Stormwater Advisory Committee, and, you know, Stan, at his memorial service, was described by many people as a unique individual and quite a character, and I think that about sums it up. Stan will be very much missed by us. He was a lot of fun, and, you know, he really loved Amberly Village, so I recognize Stan Cohen. And then, I think in the past, at the January meeting, I've talked about kind of what we accomplished in 2014, prior year, and our plan- kind of what we accomplished in two thousand, the prior year, and our plan for next year. I plan on doing that at the February meeting. But the one thing I, I do want to mention is that, you know, that we clearly had, I think, you know, a lot of activity in two thousand sixteen, a lot of good things that are occurring in the village. But I think there is so much occurring, and one of the key items for council as well as the administration is, we've developed a lot of new communication mechanisms, but two thousand seventeen, it will be very critical, and we do a lot of communicating, given everything that's going on with the police levy, going on with Amberly Green, going on with the North Site, going on with the former Gibson property. We really will need to up our game on communication, and so that will be one of the things I will talk about in February. With that, that concludes my mayor's report. Any questions? If not, we will move on to new business, and I know Councilwoman Conway has a couple items, so we'll first recognize her.
Thank you. In regards to the Duke Pipeline, I just wanted to remind everyone and announce that there is a community town hall this Thursday, January twelfth, at the Evendale Recreation Center, being put on by the NOPE group, kind of bringing people up to date on why this is still an issue, and sharing some, you know, what's coming next, that sort of thing. So it's kind of like, it would be a nice precursor to the Duke meeting if people are, you know, interested, and of course encourage people to go. It's at six-thirty, sorry, I didn't, didn't say that, Evendale Recreation Center. And then, also in regards to the Duke Pipeline, I have a question, sort of. I have had input from several people in the community that are very concerned about the A-line, and it's referenced in the application about the Central Corridor Pipeline, but it's not clear what Duke's plans are, and they live near this pipeline, this existing line through, which goes through Amberly, and wondering, their biggest questions are, what can Duke do without notifying us? You know, what, what are they allowed to do? And so I just wanted to put that out there for the manager, the law director, is this, could we at least get some clarity on what we, what we know today around this fight, not knowing what Duke's plans are? I mean, that's down the road.
So that's that, the second thing. And then the final thing is, I belong to the TAF Museum, and in their current membership magazine, it lists that the artist who did our mural is having an exhibit there in, starting in March for a month. Cedric Cox. That was kind of cool. That, that concludes my new business.
Any other new business?
Just wanted to say thank you to the Police Department for the Hanukkah candlelighting event that several of us were able to attend, and just please send our, our thanks. It was really neat. It's always very special. We have very special relationships in this community, and just such an incredible sensitivity to our Orthodox community, and just the Jewish community in general in this neighborhood, and it's very much appreciated, I know, by all of us, and it was really cool and special to be able to, to be there and to be part of that. So thank you for, to the Police Department for that.
Anything else? If not, you can consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.